December 7th, 2023. This is a regular meeting of the North Attleboro Planning Board. Members in attendance are Greg Walsh, Bill Blaze, Marie Klauner, and Greg Lawrence. First item on the agenda is approval of minutes.
No minutes, Madam Chair.
That's why there's nothing after that. Our next item is the appro- under general business is the Level 2 site plan review for Arson Hambarzirunian.
Madam Chair, we are still waiting for the applicant.
I'm sorry, you can't hear me? Oh, okay. Thank you.
Madam Chair, we are still waiting for the applicant to respond.
Okay.
So he's not in attendance tonight.
The next item on the agenda is Melissa, Massachusetts, LLC, 143 Payne Road. Approval not required to create one lot. Who would like to present this?
Good evening. Tyler LaFrenja, Riser Engineering Company, 93 George Levin Drive. The A&R we're bringing forward tonight is to subdivide an existing house lot into existing as well as one new buildable house lot. It's at 143 Payne Road. It is R40 zoning, and this plan should meet all the zoning setbacks, requirements, et cetera. If there's any other questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Any questions?
No, one minute.
The board goes first, and then I come to you, okay? Greg?
Which one?
This one, sorry. To my right, Mr. Lawrence.
To the right? No.
Mr. Blaze?
No.
Mr. Walsh?
I don't believe so.
Hill, I'm going to ask you the same question I always ask you. Do both lots meet, for the record, do both lots meet frontage and size requirements?
Yes, Madam Chair. Both lots have the required area of frontage.
What's the side yard setback? Not that it matters because it'll be pre-existing.
20. Side yard is 20 feet.
So, the under-alteration house, did you go? What kind of alterations there?
Currently, she- the owner has a building permit and is putting a garage addition on.
Did they make him go for a variance on the 14 feet?
Not that I'm aware of. It was a pre-existing non-conforming, and the garage is not encroaching on that lot line.
Well, it'd be a building department thing anyways, but...
But you can't make it more non-conforming, so let me check into that.
Okay.
Yeah, it would be a building department thing regardless.
It wouldn't be ours. Our only requirement is the standards for zoning. Would anyone here like to ask a question? I'm sorry, but you need to come up to microphone and speak and identify yourself, give your name and address, please.
I live at 479 Cumberland Ave. My name's Nicole Leidy, and I just have some questions about your- this building is right off Draper behind Carmax, correct?
Well, that's a different...
No.
Nope.
Okay, okay, then, sorry.
Anyone else have any questions with regard to this A&R? Mr. Blaze, what is your pleasure?
I make a motion that we accept the A&R for 143 Payne Road.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Blaze, seconded by Mr. Lawrence. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
opposed? Abstained, so moved, four to nothing. Thank you.
I don't see...
Next item on the agenda is Casa Realty Builders, the estate subdivision, a request to release a bond and peer review funds.
Madam Chair, the applicant is not coming tonight, but he wanted to notify you that the landscaping has been planted and the curbing is complete. He is still asking for a bond reduction tonight. Technically, the board reduced the bond to $50,000. However, you could argue no action took place, and he still wants to reduce further than that, below $50,000, and it's up to the planning board or keep the pre-existing vote as is to the current amount of $50,000. It's up to the board.
Have you witnessed that the landscaping was installed?
So, I'll be honest with you. It was completed last Thursday, and I did not, but I did check the curbing. I just did not have a chance for it tonight. But there are some concerns that Chair Klauner brought up about whether or not it will survive until next spring, given that how late in the season it was planted. And there is a letter of guarantee in your packet by the landscape company. So I guess it's up to the board if they want to reduce the bond amount even lesser than $50,000 or keep it.
Well, this was basically the concern that I was left with, is that anything that was being planted in the end of November might not survive.
I'm planting plants and projects right now.
Excuse me?
I'm planting plants and bushes and trees on projects right now.
I didn't- I'm not concerned about yours. I'm concerned about the one that we had walking on, so I just wanted it in writing that they will replace anything that doesn't make it. Since you haven't seen it, and I did not get a chance to get out there, I'm kind of reluctant to do any reductions.
Sure.
This improves it, but have any of you guys been out to see it?
I've been meaning to drive by, just haven't had a chance.
I haven't.
Okay.
Is that all that was outstanding?
What?
Is that all that was outstanding? Was that curb and this landscaping?
The curb and the landscaping, yeah.
I was going to say, has Conservation signed off on what they need to sign off on that project?
On what?
The estates.
Have they issued a certificate of compliance on the project?
I'm not sure if Conservation did or not, to be honest.
Do they hold a bond?
No.
I'm wondering if we need to check to make sure everybody else is happy before. I feel like there's a trend with this gentleman, that unless we have a whip, he doesn't care about the carrot. So the whip is his bond, and he's not going to fix any issues that anybody in town has unless we hold something over.
Just one tiny comment. The Department of Public Works has reviewed it, you know, over the past year, so we- as we all have, and they're satisfied with everything thus far, whether or not Conservation...
I would just check with Conservation.
Yeah, I'm not sure about that, to be honest.
Well, we've already- we already reduced it. He's just looking for the rest of it now?
Correct. But technically, just, you know...
Right, I know. We voted to reduce it, but it never got reduced.
Correct. So technically, we voted to reduce it, but it hasn't been reduced because I didn't complete the paperwork.
Does the board want to reduce it by some minimum amount as a gesture of...
Nope.
Nope? Okay.
Just get everybody's...
I'd like to know that everybody's happy. Every other department is happy, and everything's coped with.
Well, I agree with you that I think Conservation would be the one that you would want to double-check with, because they're the ones who, if they had any replication areas or whatever, you would need to find out what was happening with that. Okay. So could you put this on- carry this forward to the agenda, the second agenda this month, please?
Yes, Madam Chair.
Okay. The next item on the agenda is Lobisir Companies. Before we begin, before we begin, before we begin...
I'll fix this, hold on.
That's still me- is it?
The blower is...
Okay. Maybe that's why it was toasty warm in here for a change.
It is a little on the wrong side.
And it usually is not.
Yeah, usually it's definitely not.
Well, it'll cool off pretty quickly, unless it gets a lot of hot air kept going in here, we'll see. Okay, I just want to make a few things very clear. If you look at the agenda, it says this is a general business. This is not a public hearing. I asked the principal of Lobisir to, if they wanted to, come before the planning board just for a discussion, because we don't have any permit rights over this project. That belongs solely to the planning board.
Yeah, zoning board.
Sorry, zoning board, thank you. And I explained that in projects, some larger projects, some even smaller projects, we asked the applicant to come in before they file, so that we can have what I've referred to as a pre-application meeting. It gives the planning board a chance to comment on things like landscaping, general aesthetic appearance, some things that are not necessarily within our purview, but which, I mean, in that we can't require them, even if it is a site plan before us, because our regulations at the moment don't specify types of landscaping. But the board has developed a pattern over the past couple of years of asking for landscaping that has a better chance of survival, and that will also look better in the long term. We've made the comment, or I have, over and over again, that as pieces- parcels get redeveloped, example on Route 1, we ask the applicants to do something that makes that particular lot more attractive, has more flowers, has one place put a whole row of hydrangeas out front. They weren't required to do that, but they did that. So it's those very simple things that the applicant can talk about with the board. It is not a formal presentation. It is just a discussion between the applicant, any of his representatives, and the board. Because it is not a public hearing, I am not required to ask or allow for any public input. However, because I think that generally speaking, public input helps make projects better, I am going to do that. The process will be that once they're finished, and the planning board has asked whatever they want to ask, if nothing, then nothing, and then I will give people here the opportunity to speak. The general routine is and always has been, you have to be recognized by raising your hand. I recognize you. You come up to the podium, state your name and address, and you have a- I'm going to give it a five-minute limit to allow for any more people to speak if they wish, okay? If I need to adjust that as we go along, I can do that. That is my prerogative as chair, okay? Mr. Jacoby?
I'm going to clock out.
Can you hear me now?
Yes, this is much, much better.
Okay. It was the blower, okay.
Can you clock me out?
Please. Mr. Lawrence is leaving the table at 6:42.
Madam Chair, members of the board, my name is Jack Jacoby. I'm an attorney with offices at 144 Bank Street in Attleboro. I represent the applicant for this project, Lobisir. We have most of our team here tonight, but because this was put together on relatively short notice, we couldn't get the full team here. We will have the full team at the initial hearing next week with the Zoning Board of Appeals. I also want to just give a brief overview. I want to build on a little bit of what you said. North Attleboro has something less than 3% of affordable housing, and that means that Chapter 40B of the laws of the Commonwealth comes into play, which is something that allows overrides, if that's not a technical word, but it's actually what happens. It allows waivers and exemptions from certain things that otherwise would apply in the zoning bylaw. And we do have a slide later on where we can show you exactly which things meet zoning and which things we would be requesting waivers for. Yes, a comprehensive permit is issued by the Zoning Board of Appeals, but Chapter 40B requires the zoning board to send a copy of the application to all of the other relevant boards in the town, and my understanding is that you did get a request from them for your input, and the zoning board is allowed and encourages input from other boards. I spoke with Sandy McCorry, who is the clerk to the zoning board, and she spoke with the chairman of the zoning board, because we wanted to make sure that it was not a problem if we came here first before we made our initial presentation, and the word I got back was that they welcomed the input of the planning board and thought that it would be a good idea if we came. On a very, very basic level, this board reviews site plans every meeting, and the zoning board does not have quite as much experience with that, so they asked us to come before you and- so that you can make a recommendation to them as to what you see, and they have some feedback for us, some input that may make this a bit better. As you said, landscaping is always an issue. We've got an initial landscaping program, but things can always be changed for the better. So, this project is to build a 40 apartment building. It's not a condo project, it's not a sale project, it's a rental project, and there is a mix of studios, one bedrooms, two bedrooms, and three bedrooms. The law requires us to make 25% of the units affordable. Affordable is a term that's defined in state law. It has to do with the median family income and percentages of that, and not really relevant for our hearing tonight, but just to let you know that. And so 10 of the 40 units would be- would have the affordability requirement. There is actually a lottery for those who would get those apartments, and the- there's a- an agency that we would then use to conduct that lottery, so that it's not our rental office that decides who gets the units. The units are mixed throughout the building, so it's not like all of the first floor is the affordable units. They are mixed throughout the building, and they're also mixed through the studios, the one bedrooms, the two bedrooms, and the three bedrooms, so that it's a- it's a mix. This property is in the C30 zoning district. As you probably are aware, there is not a lot of call for brick and mortar retail at this time. Mostly what I'm seeing in my practice is things like medical office buildings, restaurants, hotels, but that is one of the overrides, one of the waivers that can be granted by the Zoning Board of Appeals, because multifamily housing is not otherwise allowed in this zone. So this would allow multifamily housing. The property is located between Carmax and the sturdy medical facility. It's along Draper. It's also bounded by a ramp for Interstate 295. So rather than letting me drone on further and further and steal all of the thunder from our experts, what I'd like to do is to bring up Kevin Lobisir, who is the principal, who's going to take you through a portion of this. We also have other people from our engineering team here tonight, and we hope that we can answer your questions, and we hope that we can make this a project that everyone will be proud of.
Hopefully I don't say too many things that Jack was just saying, so...
I'm sorry, but you need to identify yourself, name and address, please.
Yep, I was just about to do that.
Oh, sorry.
I'm Kevin Lobisir, I'm the owner and president of Lobisir Building Corp. I live at 31 Whitewood Road in Milford, Massachusetts. We're a real estate development company that has served central Mass and eastern Massachusetts for over 27 years. We've been creating successful real estate developments in Upton, Milford, Bellingham, Hawkinson, Franklin, Lakeville, Sudbury, Oxford, Medway, and recently Douglas. We build single-family homes, we build townhomes, active adult communities, as well as medical office buildings, and residential apartment buildings. We currently own and manage over 300,000 square feet of medical office and residential apartments, and I like to consider us an A to Z type of a company, and by that I mean that we purchase the land, we entitle the land, we're the actual general contractor and builder. We also manage and maintain all of our own properties. The intention for 150 Draper Ave would be as a long-term asset hold for our company. Up on the screen, we just put some stuff on the screen because I've never met your board, and you haven't met me, so I'm just trying to give a little bit of an idea of some of the projects that we do have. The one on the left, that landmark place, that happened to be a private-public partnership deal with the town of Milford. It was a former middle school. We did a bunch of renovations on the old part of the building. We tore down like a 1967 addition and put a whole new addition on. That became a 38-unit, 55 and over apartment complex. The building to the right is in Upton, Massachusetts. That's a 40B. That's 44 units. And we also have that building, and that's in Franklin, right on Route 140, and that whole building is leased long-term to the Milford Regional Hospital System. Jack did mention a little bit about the property itself. I think everybody that's here probably knows where it is. It's on Draper Ave, we're north of the I-295 on-ramp, and our butters to the left and the right of the property consist of a medical office building to the west and the Carmax to the east. Across the street from our property is a residential neighborhood, as that picture shows. We feel like the 150 Draper Ave is a great location for a quality rental housing development, given its location in a strong, well-managed and active community. It has excellent highway access, it has proximity to nearby retail amenities, and not to mention it's adjacent to the North Attleboro Medical Center. We also have electricity, town water, town sewer, which is available in Draper Ave, and the GATRA bus service is also available on South Washington Street. Just quickly, on our development team, as Jack mentioned, there is a couple people that couldn't make the meeting tonight, but we have put together a development team that not only has extensive experience in the field, in their own fields, but we've also- we've all been a team for quite some time. This is our first project with Jack, so I'm looking forward to that process with Jack. Our 40B advisor is Ed Marchand, who is not here. He's worked on over 175 Chapter 40B projects in advising both developers and local communities. Obviously, you just met Jack, and of course I think you know Jack. Jack's our 40B permitting attorney, who's had significant prior experience permitting projects in North Attleboro and with your board. Mike Dean and Peter Lavoy of DNL Design Group are our civil engineers, and Peter Lavoy is here tonight, and he will be speaking after myself. Jeremy Baldwin is the lead architect for us, and he runs up the Margo DiStefano Architects' design studio. We are working with Vinessen Associates for our traffic and our impact studies, and unfortunately Jeffrey could not be here. And Scott Goddard of Goddard Consulting is our wetland scientist, and that will be at- will be filing with the Conservation Commission. Is that the next slide? So just as- I know Jack gave you a little bit of a real rough rundown of the building, but I'd like to, if you give me a couple more minutes, I'll go over the building itself. There is a total of 40 rental units, four studio one-bedroom units, 20 one-bedroom, one-bathroom units, there is 12 two-bedroom, two-bathroom units, and four three-bedroom, two-bathroom units. The four three-bedroom units, just to give you a quick story on that, is through Chapter 40B, a minimum of 10% of the units in the property have to be three-bedroom. So we hit the 10%. And then the breakdown, of course, is the studios are 10%, the one-bedroom, one-bathroom is 50%, the two-bedroom is 30%, the three-bedroom makes up 10% of the property. 10 of the 40 units are under the Chapter 40B affordable units. We will be- our affordable unit component will be that of the 80% area median income, so this is- this is not any kind of subsidized housing. The affordable units will be prorated among unit types, as Jack discussed earlier. They'll be distributed throughout the building, but the basic breakdown of it is there will- for the affordabilities, there'll be one studio unit, five one-bedroom units, three two-bedroom units, and one three-bedroom unit. All 40 units will help North Attleboro increase its subsidized housing inventory. I'm sure the board is familiar with that, so even though 25% are affordable, because it's rental, all 40 go towards the subsidized housing inventory for the town, which is currently at 2.9%. I shouldn't say currently, that was as of June of this year. 150 Draper Ave will be a four-story, flat-roofed building on 1.47 acres. All units will have elevator access. By design, the building will be attractive to seniors, empty-nesters, young professionals, and residents requiring accessible units. There's going to be a total of 66 parking spaces, including 12 garage spaces in a single garage building that runs along the property line where the medical center is, and the parking ratio is 1.65 spaces per unit. There is also one additional garage bay that would be used solely for bike storage for the tenants. The amenities inside the building will include a rental office, a co-working multipurpose room, a package delivery room, a fitness room, a protected bike storage, along with the one that we'll have at the garage, electric vehicle charging stations, a small playground in the back of the property towards the, you know, the back of the property for us is where we butt 295. There'll be a grill area. We'll also have a dog walk section, and 38 of the 40 units will have either a balcony or a patio. The building will be operated as smoke-free. A local preference policy will be possible for 70% of the affordable units during the lottery, so that means just during the lottery, local residents will get preference to be able to qualify. All trash, recycling, and snow plowing services will be provided through private vendor, which is us, so this is- this is never to be a town-managed property. There's nothing here that would be going to the town. Jack had mentioned earlier about the possible household incomes and how that, you know, what that looked like. Just to give you a quick rundown on that, a studio- the studio units, the qualification range would be a lower $57,000, and the high is actually $57,000, that doesn't change. The one-bedroom ranges from $57,000 to $65,000. The two-bedroom units are between $65,000 and $81,900, and a three-bedroom unit would be an income ranging between $73,750 and $95,000. So it gives you an idea of where the 80% ranges. A lengthy traffic study was done by Vinessen Associates, who was used by many communities all around Massachusetts, including North Attleboro. Vinessen Associates said, and this is in quotes here, "that the project can be accommodated within the confines of the existing transportation infrastructure." We fully expect that the ZBA will be issuing a peer review on the traffic, and obviously in meetings that we move forward with ZBA, Viness would- will be present for those meetings. I'm not sure, because I don't think you were expecting a long presentation. I do have a whole page that I could read for the traffic, but I'll- I'll leave it for ZBA if you want. I can't- I- what I could tell...
A lot of numbers?
No numbers.
Statistics?
No, it was just a lot of...
Shame.
They had made recommendations when they originally gave it to us, and what I can tell you and that you'll see through the ZBA is that Peter and Mike at DNL Design, we've implemented all of their recommendations, so now obviously we need to wait to see what North Attleboro's peer review says about those recommendations and adjust from there. So I'll save you the pain of me reading that.
Excuse me for a minute. What numbers were you looking for?
Usually they'll, when they send their traffic reviews, it's page after page of counts and numbers, just charts...
Yeah.
...of numbers and numbers, and we don't know what any of it means.
Yeah, I wasn't going to read that, dear. It was- it was the summary.
That's fine.
It was the summary. But I think with that, I'll- I'm going to stop talking right now, and I'll let Peter Lavoy from DNL Design go over the site plan.
My name's Peter Lavoy. I work with DNL Design Group. I'm the civil engineer on this project. Like Kevin and Jack said, we have Draper Ave that runs along the top of the page here. Carmax is on this side, and this is the medical center, right there. The on-ramp on 295 runs along the bottom of the page. So we have the existing lot in red. It's basically 1.47 acres. So we have the existing lot in red. It's basically 1.47 acres. We do have an existing structure in the middle with an existing garage on this side here. And then the driveway runs in this way. The lot slopes from this side, the west, to the east. Mainly, it comes down to this corner here. Most of the lot drains to this corner here. And then goes into a swale that runs along the side of 295. So what we're proposing is, we're proposing our entrance in this location here, that is 24 feet wide, comes in, and we have two-way traffic all the way around. We have parking on one, two, three sides, and then a little bit of parking here. This is the garage that Kevin talked about, where we have 12 garage bays. And then we have bicycle storage in this location here. And we also have two handicap on this side of the building and two handicap on this side of the building. For pedestrian access, we have sidewalks around the building. We also have a sidewalk out to the grill play area and grill area in this area back here. We have a walk that goes across this drive with a crosswalk. Then we have a sidewalk that goes up to Draper. And then we have another crosswalk that will tie into the existing sidewalk that looks like it was recently put in. You have access to Route 1 going this way. We did see one of the transportation recommendations, and we will be putting a concrete pad up near the entrance for a school bus stop. So that will be up here near the proposed signage. Proposed sewer and water will come off of Draper, right here, in this location here, as you can see, will tie into the town sewer and water. Proposed drainage, we have catch basins in the back here and on the side, and then in this area here, entrance-wise. This drainage will be collected. The pavement in the parking will be collected with those catch basins, brought into drain manholes, and then into a storm scepter, which will give me treatment. And then there's another storm scepter on this side. So all the water will be collected, treated, and then discharged into this underground basin under the pavement. Also, the proposed building will also tie into the underground basin directly for infiltration. So we'll get out infiltration. We use NOAA to do our storm calculations, so it's a little bit higher than the TR-40. So our storm rainfall events were designed to handle higher storm events. This area here will mitigate the storm events and then discharge out this way into a settling pond with a level spreader. So that level spreader will give kind of like a sheet flow. The little settling pond will fill up when it discharges into here and then kind of sheet flow over this crushed stone before it goes into this swale that you can see that runs along the on-ramp. No runoff will go out to the street. It'll all be, all this runoff that will be generated from this site will be captured onsite, treated, and then discharged in this area back here, going with the existing grade of the lot. So we're not going to affect any butters. We're not going to increase any runoff. So we did not increase runoff or rate off our site. This will be peer reviewed through the ZBA peer reviewer. So grading-wise, we do have a retaining wall on this side, right here, as you can see. It's basically four feet at this location. And then from about here to about here, it's roughly six feet high in this location here. We do propose wooden guardrail along the top. And there is an existing chain-link fence that's going to remain, which is on this side and this side. So we're not going to touch that chain-link fence.
You can go to landscaping, David.
So we do have a new landscaping plan. We had the landscaper redo the plan. I can give you a copy of it. I brought a hard copy. So I think there are four nice existing trees that run along Draper. So we're proposing to remove just this one here. And we're proposed to keep the one, two, three trees. If they're healthy, they will stay. We are proposing eight maple trees along the back of those trees on our property. And then through here, we have arbovites, white pines, and some rhododendrons along the street. We have arbovites along this property line here, wrapping up into this area here. And then we do have a mixture of vegetation around the building. So we have ornamental grass, inkberry, winter berry, summer sweet, and arrowwood around the building. We have a couple of dogwood trees in the back here with some rhododendrons. I think that's about it for... That's it about, that is basically it for me. The site is basically kind of a balanced site. We will have to bring in a little bit of fill on this area here, but we are proposing to cut a little bit on the west side and take that material and kind of put it on the east, because we're putting our underground basin in this location here. We did do testing. We tested the site. We did 12 test pits throughout the parcel, just to see what was out there, because having worked in North Attleboro, so I don't know if there's a lot of ledge or anything like that. But we did not find any ledge. So we basically did the soil testing for groundwater for the underground basin to verify where groundwater was. That was roughly like 36 to 40 inches below existing grade. But that's the reason also why we put the underground basin on the east side, because this is the lower side. So basically, the bottom of my underground basin is that grade, and then we fill around it. So we're roughly three feet above groundwater, and that would meet stormwater management. The drainage was designed following stormwater management. So we meet the TSS removal. We meet the mitigation. We meet our recharge, because we're putting all this pavement in the building. And we meet that, also that standard in the stormwater management. That's basically it.
Kevin?
And I just wondered if you wanted an updated copy of the landscaping plan?
Thank you.
So I think we're going to try to wrap up quickly for you guys, but we wanted to just look at the building, what we're proposing for the building. Obviously, you can see that it's a four-story building, flat-roofed style. It's a combination. This is all thin stone, so there's various areas that have thin stone. That darker brown color there and in that area, that's going to be a shake-style siding. And then all of that lighter colored siding is a standard clapboard type of siding. You can see, I had mentioned that 38 out of the 40 units, we're going to have balconies or decks. So on the lower level, that would be what I would consider, excuse me, a patio or balcony. So the lower-level ones would be a patio, and then on the upper floors, those are the actual balconies. This is just giving you a quick little idea. I know I mentioned the building to you guys and told you some of the amenities in it. So this is the first floor of the building. This is just highlighting that this is the gym area. Up here is the management office. You can see that area there in the building. Here's the elevator, so the elevator is very central to all floors. Kind of give you a quick square, well, that's okay. That's all right. I just had, we had done the red for you guys, because sometimes people want to know how big the units are. So that's the square footage of an actual unit. And then as far as amenities, on the second floor, again, there's the elevator. Here's your common hallway, set of stairs that brings you back down to the main entrance. And this is the community room. Our community rooms tend to be very active, because we are actively managing our buildings. We do provide a lot of services as far as doing things like card nights, bingo nights, you know, just special games. And it's pretty cool, because it's good for everybody, because we tend to have tenants that stay for a long time, because they end up feeling like family. So that is basically... We have one more? Oh, yeah, sorry. And this is just a sample of what our interiors would look like. So nine-foot ceilings, solid surface flooring, carpet in the bedrooms, full-blown, regular residential kitchens. These are not like a bunch of cheapy, just shelf-type of stuff. Granite quartz countertops, you know, large windows, very nice cottage-style casing, baseboard. So very high-level. I think because of my background being a lot of building-for-sale, I tend to build my apartments that would look more like a condominium versus an apartment. So I think that's now it.
Yeah, then Jack's just going to go over some more.
Okay, Jackson. But thank you for your time. Actually, one other thing that I would like to say, Marie. I'm happy that there's a lot of neighbors here. It was last minute, but we did reach out through...
Yeah, overnight mail.
Overnight mail. We actually did hold a Tuesday night, we held an event at the Hampton Inn, where we rented one of the rooms to try to, you know, get some neighbors to come so we could talk about stuff. But unfortunately, no one showed up. But they're here tonight, so I guess we can talk tonight.
Okay.
The screen's a little indistinct, but this is the zoning chart. And look at the printed-out copy I have. So the minimum lot size for a building, a multifamily building, would be 146,500. We have 64,192, so that's one of the waivers. We meet the lot width. We meet the lot frontage. We meet the lot depth. We meet the setbacks, except for the garage building, which is 6.3 feet, and the required is 25. The open space percentage of 40, we are below that at 28.5, the waivers, so that's a waiver. The building height is 44.5 feet plus a 3.5-foot parapet, so that's an additional waiver. The parking space size, we're looking for nine-by-18s and 66 instead of 80. And of course, the use in a commercial zone. So those are the primary waiver requests. And then, just so everyone knows, the zoning board has requested bids for peer reviews. One bid they got was from Beals &amp; Thomas. Another was from Par Engineering. They, next week, will choose who will be doing a peer review for the town. We will pay for that. And so after that hearing next week, I suspect that there will be a period of time when there will be no further hearings until the peer reviews come back. And at this point, we'd certainly be happy to answer questions. And I know that you're being presented with a lot tonight, and it may not give you the ability at this quick a presentation to write a letter to the zoning board with your thoughts and recommendations. So in the event that you would like us to come back at another time, if you want us to bring the traffic engineer, we're happy to come back after everyone's had a chance to review this and answer any further questions. And that's our presentation.
Thank you. Any comments, Mr. Walsh?
Yeah, I have a couple. I figured one out myself. I love it when everybody puts pretty pictures in their presentations and compares their project to previous projects they do, because it's a double-edged sword. Especially when you said that the number, this picture here, I think you did it in Milford? Upton? I think that building looks pretty good. I like the roof and stuff like that. I figured out why you're doing a flat roof on this one, because that's three stories. This one's four. It cuts into your height, so that nullens that question. Something like that, I think, would fit into the neighborhood a little bit better, do the best I can.
If this was in front of us, where I was making the decision, I would be saying, put the curb all the way across your frontage. And to Kevin's point, I believe you used the medical offices being next door as an asset, which is where I would say a sidewalk to their entrance would be an asset as well, especially since you're claiming it's an asset. There's a sidewalk all the way across the frontage of CarMax, and it would probably just help the neighborhood, help you if you have residents going to the medical offices. They could walk. If there's a butters next door, they could walk on your sidewalk, connect it to the sidewalk that's already in front of CarMax. I think it just makes sense to tie it all the way through.
I was a little bit curious about the status of the site. If it was a cut fill, I tried to do the best I can with what I have here on the plans here. Do you have any idea what it is? Is it an import-export? You haven't run the number once? You haven't run the number once?
I don't know the number offhand. It's been a while since I...
Did you guess? Is it a big import or an export?
Most of the import is through drainage, so I think it's a small import.
Small import.
Yeah, and most of it's, you know, you've got to put the drainage in, you've got to put the stone around it and sand and stuff like that. So it's mostly, we would do that.
Is the soil that's on-site good enough to be used and flipped? Because it is a bit of a cut fill. I used the term balanced site, right?
Yeah, I did use the term balanced, because I remember it was balanced, but the material's kind of...
When I think balanced, I think no trucks in or no trucks out. So that's why I'm asking.
Yeah, it's a small import then.
Okay.
And we can provide you with an email with the actual numbers?
Because, I mean, for a project like this, I'd be curious to know the kind of trucking that's coming in and out. And that would be a recommendation, I would say, to zoning board, is try to be mindset of that. Because that would, you know, if it's a lot of trucks coming in, you might want to limit the hours they come in, so it's not to disturb. Definitely want to limit construction hours if there's a lot of trucks coming in, especially truck drivers love to slam their tailgates.
I do think, Greg, that the reason why, in my presentation, I wanted to mention that we're the A to Z people, because when we talk to boards, whether it's job board, the ZBA, or any town it is, I mean, you are talking to the person that is going to be directing this part of it, the building part, the management part. So I really do feel very comfortable. Everything rolls down to me, trust me. I get that. But the benefit of it is that, you know, after a meeting like tonight, like I said, we tried to do the public outreach before, but we're certainly... It wasn't like a do-all, end-all.
You did bring that up, and I'm a little curious about that. You said Tuesday night, you rented...
It was Tuesday night, yeah.
When did you send out the letters?
It was the end of last week, so...
It's a little tight.
Oh, absolutely. It all kind of came in, it got recommended to us on how to do it.
Can I just point out that it sounds disingenuous when you say that you had a meeting Tuesday night and you sent out letters Friday or Thursday before, and nobody came?
Okay. I mean, I just said it was a bummer that they didn't show up, because I would have loved it. At that meeting, it didn't seem like anybody would care, and now it seems like...
If I was invited to something Monday night, I probably wouldn't come either, if I was told tonight.
We just didn't know we were coming.
Name?
Sorry, David Pyne, Development Associate. I was in charge of sending it out. We overnighted it as soon as we figured out we were coming. We just wondered...
Yeah, it's fine. I guess what I'm saying is, the way he made the comment was, and oh, by the way, we invited everybody to come to this meeting and nobody showed up.
Yeah, you just took, I'm sorry, Greg. I just simply meant that I'm here to talk, and I'm just letting people know. That's what I tried to do.
And I get it, and I'm not using it as an attack. What I'm saying is, is when you say that, and you only give... What you probably did, there was annoy a lot of the butters, is probably what happened there. But it's neither here nor there.
And my last thing was just that on the hours and things like that, that's what I was saying, where it rolls down to me. That's part of conversations that I like to have with the neighborhood, with the ZBA, so that we can talk about what would make sense at the site. Obviously, we certainly can't do work, you know, in a one-hour timeframe, but if it's a day after school buses, then, you know, we'd be the one implementing it too. That was my point.
We typically, when it's in front of the planning board, it's like seven to five, Monday to Saturday. No bank holidays, no Sundays, and there's a couple of other stuff we do. But what we might do is if you say there's going to be 1,000 trucks, because there won't be on this site, but if there's going to be 1,000 trucks rolling in, we're going to say trucks between 10 and 2.
Yep. So that's all I got, because whatever the recommendations are, we would do it.
Okay.
Typically blackout periods, rush hour in the morning.
Yeah, exactly.
School, we would expect those.
I think, I think that's it for now.
Okay.
Okay. One thing that's probably going to come up, since you are doing subsurface, is you're going to need an inspection port in every single row of that system. Have you guys had any discussions with the fire department?
We have, yes.
Are they okay?
They gave us the blessing today.
They gave us the blessing today.
Okay.
Yeah, so, so, my name's Peter Lavoy. Uh, so, I sent, uh, a plan, email plan, uh, the beginning of this week to the chief, and he got back to me today saying that the truck simulation plan that I had submitted was fine. He said it was sufficient and fine.
Did they provide a letter?
Uh, I have an email. I mean, I can...
Ask for a letter.
Yeah, so, ju, I'm glad you just said it was the truck simulation plan. We ran into that on another project where they said the same thing, but they weren't satisfied with everything else.
Right, because I, when I, when I met the chief, he gave me the dimensions of the, the fire truck that would be showing at, up at the site, and, so I used those dimensions, and I, I thought I had sent it to him, and then I looked in my email, did not find it, so I sent it to him Monday, and he got back to me today.
You might just wanna double-check, he has no other comments on anything else, just...
No, I, I did email him today after I received his email, and I asked him if he had any other concerns or anything like that to contact me.
Ask for a letter that said they had...
Yeah, I will, I will email him tomorrow and ask for a, a letter.
Ask him also to, uh, carbon copy the ZBA and the planning board. Don't just send it to you, send it to us as well.
Okay.
Uh, just so you know, we had had a conversation with the fire department within the past month or so to come up with a plan within the next couple of months to more formal, formalize, uh, the correspondence and the okays by the, uh, fire department, because we always look for that, you know? You got an okay charing radius, can your trucks get around the building, all that stuff. But, we discovered that, as Bill said, the, uh, initial questions were okay, but they had questions about other things, so we've asked them to kinda develop like a little checklist so that they know everything is covered and that is in writing. So if, if you just make sure you get whatever response as a letter to, and probably conservation, too, because if there was a change to be made, it might make their ears perk up, so if you can do that, that'd be great.
Okay. I have ten more questions. He's got something else.
Okay.
Um, the twelve garage bays, right? Are those single-car bays?
Singles.
So the building's like a hundred and sixty, a hundred and seventy feet long, something like that?
Single.
But it's, it's single, single-car?
Single-car.
Okay, yeah. Um, and then the last one was the utilities to the building. You mentioned that there were a couple of big trees that you're gonna try to incorporate into the landscape plan and save. Have you overlaid those in the utility?
Yes.
All right, so the utilities can go in without disturbing the trees? Okay.
We've met with the, uh, the electrical company, too, so they went over the location of where they wanted the pole and things like that, so that's how we incorporated it.
Is it gonna be a pole to undergrounds to the building?
It's gonna be a pole to our property and then undergrounds from there.
Okay. All right.
Okay.
Gail, did you have anything you wanted to make comment on?
Um, nothing really in mind. I mean, the only one comment I would make is, uh, it's eighty percent in my meeting, affordability's twenty percent less than the average income in the surrounding area, so technically, people call that workforce housing. Um, besides that, um, you know, I really think it's, the zoning board's purview, and if the planning board would like to make some general comments, I could draft a letter, uh, that could be, uh, for discussion tonight if the board chooses.
Do we have to draft a letter?
No, we're not required to.
No, we're not required to send a letter.
Did they ask us to?
No, they did not.
I'll write that.
I, I mean, we get that generic letter...
Right.
That says, "If you have any comments, please forward them along." Um, I don't think it's worth us to make any really specific comments, because...
No, I'd say the generic ones that we always make, sidewalks and...
Yeah, sidewalks, granite curbing, no, no real tall ornamental grasses.
Yeah, send them out.
I was watching that at a meeting, by the way. Um, I always ask that there are no junipers, uh, no yews, and no ornamental grasses. Sim, earlier I mentioned the long-term appearance of a place. Those low-growing shrubs look great. First, put 'em in, they're bright green, they spread fast, every landscaper loves them. But after a while, even, you know, you prune them, they get very woody on the bottom, and all, to me, they're just leaf and trash catchers, and I don't think they look good. Um, and the ornamental grasses, I mentioned, because people are putting in the ones that are nowhere near native to this part of the country than my accent is. But, um, there are shorter ones that do well. A lot of the tall ones, people don't maintain them, and again, they get trashy on the bottom, and that's why I personally ask that. I don't have the right to demand it, but I ask it. Do, do whatever you can to make the property look nice, try to avoid those.
So, sorry, I'm, I'm thinking of stuff. Uh, one comment for the board is sidewalks along with the frontage now...
We've got the note.
I, I understand that, but how about in front of the medical center?
I would say at least to their, I mean...
The driveway's right there.
But shouldn't include, and I, again, I'm just bringing up for discussion, should the applicant, should the zoning board think about asking the applicant for sidewalks in front of the medical center, not just their frontage? Again, I'm just asking.
I wouldn't do the entire medical center's frontage.
What's that?
I wouldn't do the entire medical center's frontage.
Okay. Just ask the board what they think, you know? It is, the public's right away, so...
I, I don't have anything else, so I'm gonna open it up, and so that, what I said in the beginning still applies. Uh, if you want to speak, please raise your hand, come on up. I'll give you a name and address, and make your comments or ask your questions, okay? Yes, ma'am?
Hi, my name's Nicole Lighty. I live at four-seventy-nine Cumberland. I've lived there for ten years, so I travel Draper every day. I'm up Draper, down Payne, over to Cumberland. And, um, one thing that I think if this does go through, you need to, that Draper is a big dip-down. People come, they're not supposed to, but they do, come speeding. If you put a lot of trees up front, people aren't gonna be able to see. There's kids that, on that, down there, that wait for the bus. It's, they're gonna be backing up here at one. I'm concerned about sixty cars, sixty-six parking spaces, everyone, you know, going off to work and coming home from work. At that time, it already backs up before you put a big complex there for traffic-wise. It's not gonna be good, it's not, it's already back. So you put a big complex there. I'm also worried about the school. Allen Ave was closed, and that is full. Teachers are over capacity, they don't, kids aren't getting services. So, what are you gonna do about the schools? So those would be my questions.
Anything to do with traffic and safety and, uh, line of sight and all that sort of stuff will be considered at the, at the zoning board. Um, I will, as a former teacher, I'll tell you that you should address that to the school department.
Well, I'm just saying, if you're gonna put big complexes...
I know that...
You're gonna obviously generate more children. The town has recently built complexes, apartment complexes recently.
The town hasn't built.
Well, the town hasn't. We, we have recent in the town, we have approved apartment complexes in the town recently, in the last couple of years, that built. And our schools are overcrowded. That's, that's a fact. So, I just think you're pu, putting an apartment complex in a residential area is the other places in town that would be better suited.
So just clarify one tiny comment, it's not, to really discuss the topic, it's just school enrollment has been declining in and out of that, bro, over the last twenty years by hundreds of children. I can't remember the exact number, but it is decreasing, just so we're aware of.
On top of that, that's, that's outside our purview and the zoning board's purview.
I don't want to discuss it tonight, but, but just to say something about the trends, it's decreasing.
No, it's a legitimate question. It's just that if someone builds something and they happen to move to town and they have children, we have to educate them.
But you're close to school in that district, so...
Well, it's, it's better, easier said than that. There's no legal basis to deny a project based on school capacity. That's really what it comes down to. So, the zoning board and the planning board, whenever we act on stuff, we tend to act on permits more than they do. But it's, it's better to think of it as prescriptive than, um, you know, judgment calls, right? It's really a game of, if they checkbox X, it's a yes to their project. So if they check X, Y, Z, all the way down the list, we would have no legal standing to deny their project.
Well, I think zoning is an issue, like...
Well, that's where 40B comes in, and I, I admittedly don't know enough about 40B, because those, these projects don't come before us. But, you're right, there are a lot of zoning circumstances where you can deny a project, but 40B is a workaround for that.
In some cases.
You're absolutely right.
Not at all.
You're absolutely right. But again, that's not, not why, that's not our view here.
As I indicated upfront, we're, we cannot make any decisions, vote on anything to do with this project. This was a, a simple way to give the board a heads-up about, to have the board give the applicant a couple of heads-up about what we might be paying attention to, and also, to be honest, to give people an extra chance to come out and ask questions like you are. And sometimes, we've been able to send people someplace else altogether to get an answer to their question, because it's not our purview, but, um...
The, the big thing that would be, you need to take into consideration is safety in Draper.
Okay. Thank you. Anybody else?
I can talk about the safety in Draper, I live across the street. My name's Cara Francie, I live directly across the street from this property.
I'm just gonna...
Yeah. Sorry. Okay. I live directly across the street from them, uh, and this project, like, the way the street is set up, they like, there's sidewalks to go down to CarMax and stuff, but, once you get onto Route One, not so much. And if you wanna take the public transportation that they're putting as a plus for the less trap, for the less cars there, where's the bus stop? You have to go up or down Route One. If you go up or down Route One, you're gonna cause an accident, because there's really not great sidewalks on Route One for walking around by, like, where the movie theater is, or if you're trying to get down to the mall. There isn't. That's, it doesn't exist. If you try to stay, like, I would not go anywhere near that. I've almost been hit crossing the damn street to get my mail, because cars come down, they fixed the road, made it real nice, but there's a lot of through-traffic that goes through there now, between all the houses they built up back there and people trying to cut around Route One, because of the lights that have all now built up on Route One. So they go flying down there at about fifty miles an hour, and they come over that hill, and it's blind. Taking down those trees is not gonna fix the curve in where the hill is. That is just a, a fact. I mean, I don't back out onto Draper, because you can't. You're gonna get nailed, because crossing the street, you have to hear for the cars, and now there's electric cars, which don't make a sound. So, that makes it a lot harder, because you have to listen for where the cars are just to cross the damn street. And adding more traffic up and down that street is not gonna help. And on top of that, when there's accidents that go on on Route One, they redirect the traffic up Draper and to go around that, and now you're gonna add even more traffic, because now you have people trying to live there, too, along with all the through-traffic. That road was never intended to have that much traffic on it. It wasn't supposed to be a through-trucking road, but trucks go up and down it all the time. And on top of that, now, like, even today, we had the fire truck go down. Now you're adding more, because you can't go around the mall to come out, you have to come out Draper. But if there's that much more, there's no parking on Draper. You're gonna park on Norton Road and down and around the corner if they have people that come and visit. Traffic is a major problem in that spot, in that specific spot. They can say it's really convenient, but the traffic on that road, you add that many more cars to it, it's not, because it's already getting bad, and now you're dumping another sixty cars on top of that. There's gonna be traffic backed up trying to get through the light, and now you got a fire truck trying to come down, and it's gonna take them three tries to get out of the Draper Ave intersection, because the cars are backed up past the CarMax. They do that in the morning as it is. That's where they backed up, and now you're gonna try to put a fire truck through there, or police, or an ambulance through that spot, with extra, extra traffic in commuter hours. It's just gonna get bad. And, oh, FYI, the buses start running in the afternoon at two. To go onto Draper, they start dropping off kids at two.
Thank you. Anybody else?
Hello, my point, you said that. Thanks.
Yes, sir?
Charles Duchesne.
Your voice carries, but we need it for the recording, please.
I'll take it easy on you guys.
Thank you.
Uh, Charles Duchesne, twenty-two Norton Road, excuse me. The one thing that's glaringly, uh, unaccounted-for on all the pretty sketches we see here is the extremely disproportionate size of this building and the surrounding properties. Right across the street, forty-year-old, uh, uh, forty, uh, neighborhood on Norton Road. And, um, the size of this building is domineering. I mean, it's incredibly dominant by comparison. And the height of the building alone is gonna be above five feet higher than the level of the, uh, Mankin's Farm, which is way the hell up the hill. I think it's like a twenty-foot ascent, which explains the downhill, uh, racecar routine we have every day. Um, the building's gonna be so tall as to exceed the height of most of the trees, and , uh, all I can imagine is the lights for security and everything else. Uh, we're already experiencing tremendous imposition by the hotel, excuse me, that was put across Route One on Draper. There's a whole bunch of lights there, and at night, I go to bed, I gotta close the blinds, it illuminates my whole bedroom. So, not one person has spoken this morning about this issue. I, I asked the planning board, where is the planning board on this? The obvious disproportionate nature of these shoehorning in of this huge building in this little lot, where you got barely enough room to put parking space, and I don't know what the fire department is thinking, because I can imagine the cluster, you-know-what, when there's an emergency there, and the, the potential penalty to the rest of the neighbors, and the parking, I think, is ludicrous. Inevitably, there'll be insufficient parking, because people will have visitors and whatnot, and there'll be no place to park. So, well, they're gonna either try to park on Draper, which is suicide. Well, guess what? They're gonna park in front of my house, or other people's houses, on, on Norton Road, or Furway, or whatever. We don't want that. And, um, you, I'll, you can talk to any real estate broker and ask the question about what's gonna happen to our property values as a result of this monstrosity being installed. So, we got an awful lot of energy against this thing for a lot of very good reasons. We've been a nice, quiet little neighborhood for a long time. I've lived there almost forty years. We pay our taxes, we don't have any crime, we got a nice, quiet neighborhood, the kids play, roll, you know, drive, running their bikes up and down the street. I mean, it's a very, very nice neighborhood, and you guys are gonna wreck it. So, the point that was made, and I understand the caveat with respect to us not attending any meeting...
Who's you guys?
Excuse me?
Who's you guys?
I'm sorry. The builders, not you guys, I'm sorry. No, no offense intended. Um, poor choice of word. Where was I?
About the meeting, that...
Oh, there, there was a comment made, I understand apologies accepted for insinuating there was no interest in the part of the neighborhood. I'd like to know if whatever approvals, approvals have been given to this thing were people lawfully notified by certified letter? Because none of us, and we all met a few nights ago to talk about this, knew anything about this. Anything. Except for rumor.
You mean tonight?
No.
Yeah, I, I guess you're blurring a lot of lines. You, did you not know about tonight or did you not know about the project?
I just found out about tonight, today, myself.
Okay, so this is...
But I'm not talking, referring to that.
Yeah, so, I don't know what the notification requirements are on a 40B.
Well, my understanding is five hundred foot or closer, you get a certified letter. Now, there were only a few people that fit that category. But none of them got anything certified or any formal notification.
I would bring that up on Tuesday.
Yeah, I intend to, but.
So none was given for tonight's meeting? Because it's not required to... Are you talking about this zoning board meeting where you're notified by mail for the zoning board meeting? That's the next week or not?
I'm talking about the zoning board meeting.
Okay.
Not tonight's meeting.
Okay.
But it would've been nice to get, to be known about this, too.
Well, this, this was published on our agenda, um, two, three, four days ago at least. Um, and I am sorry that you did not get that. I don't think it was ill-intentioned on the applicant's part, uh, to not get the notification out to meet at the Hampton Inn.
Yeah, and I'm not jumping on you for that. But any insinuation that there's no interest is ridiculous.
No, I, well, I'll be honest with you. I didn't.
Because I remember your neighborhood from other developments going around here. And if there's one neighborhood who always shows interest about stuff going around their neighborhood, it's yours.
Yep.
So I, it's why I questioned that when I heard him say that.
I, I'll be honest, I have seen Mr. Norton at more than one meeting in the past forty years than lots of other people that have been my friends in town for, for that long. But I don't think that the applicant was ill-intentioned. I think the applicant's intention was to try and solicit information from the neighbors.
I understand.
By making, by making it really clear that they're not just asking to build something and walk, which is what we know lots of people do. And sometimes they walk in the middle, but that is not this company's history or their practice. Whether or not, how that all works out is not for me to decide. The only decisions to be made are by the planning board. And now, excuse me, I did it again, the zoning board. I think that you are more than capable of putting together your concerns about traffic, your concerns about the height of the building, the, whatever your concerns may be. They are your legitimate neighborly concerns to bring before the zoning board. They, as, uh, was indicated, will be sending this out for a peer review. The peer review means that someone who has nothing to do with the town and nothing to do with the applicant, an engineering firm is going to have to re- review all the traffic, all the drainage, any conservation issues, and all of the issues that are brought up as part of zoning. So it's a, it's gonna have to be a very comprehensive review. Um, and that will be part of the public record. So you'll certainly be welcome to read any of that. And you're welcome to see what we have as far as our, um, discussion this evening. But it's not up to us to tell the zoning board, do this or do that. I asked to do this just to get a handle on it because I knew that our planner would be getting questions on it. That was my primary interest. My secondary was to make my landscape comments because I make them to every single person that rolls through the door.
Okay, so I appreciate that. And my comment was not to be critical of the body, the, the planning board. It was a question of a comment that inferred intentionally or otherwise that there was no interest.
I, I don't think that was the intent.
And believe me, there's a lot of interest.
Well, as I indicated, I've seen Mr. Norton at one or more meetings.
And, um, I don't know, uh, uh, Mr. Walsh made a comment about you check off the boxes and then you have no standing. Where is it in the common sense of the town's management? That says it's appropriate or inappropriate when, when you compare, uh, you know, the Empire State Building next to a small, little neighborhood? You know, one of these things considered, who, who considers them? I mean, is it, we can turn into New York City tomorrow because, uh, they, you have to catch up and you have all the Plan B?
No, I mean, there are zoning requirements that have been established, right?
But we have a, a C thirty across the street.
So, and yeah, that's where 40B comes into play where they're allowed to supersede some stuff, but not everything. Right? They have to shoe, I mean, there are requirements, they're just different requirements.
Okay, well, anyway.
All this came about, like, in the thirties and forties because a lot of towns were preventing people from doing what they wanted with their land. And the state finally stepped in and said, no, make rules that allow people to get the highest and best use of their land. That's where this all came from. This whole practice of zoning, in es- in essence. And it's spread across the country. And some places are even worse now where the state has completely taken away all rights from every town for what they can do in their town because people are too restrictive. I'm not saying that we are, but I'm just saying that's what it's turning into. And we don't want that. You have to balance it. Because if the state, if the state takes over, you're gonna get the whole MBTA situation everywhere.
Yeah. Okay, well, thank you for listening.
Thank you, Mr. Duchesne.
I have a question.
Yes, sir.
To anybody who's on the development team. What are the advertising requirements and have you sent out green cards for the zoning board meeting?
Not sure I heard your question, but we filed the abutters list certified by the assessors with the zoning board. Their obligation was to send out certified mail to abutters and abutters to abutters within three hundred feet. And I believe, you know, I, I know, I've known Ms. McCrory for a long time. I know she and her, she's very competent in what she does. Uh, I have to assume that she sent those notices out. If they weren't sent out, then we would have to stop the hearing next week and re-notice it for two or three weeks down the road and be in January. But, um, I have not heard anything from her. And then, and Mr. Duchesne's was, uh, suggesting that permits have already been granted. No permit has been granted by anyone. The process starts next week and will extend for quite a period of time.
So it's possible over the next handful of days, they could get a green card? So whoever's on that list can get a green card in the mail?
The, the green cards will go back to Sandy and if she has them.
But if they've got, if the mail has gone out, they've gotten the envelope that has the green card on the back.
Oh, yes, so it is not required by law that someone actually receive it. It's only that it be mailed to them. So if they don't pick up their certified mail, then that is on them.
Right.
That's what the law is.
So.
They've been mailed.
What?
You don't know if anything was mailed.
It's the, what he's saying is it's, it's their responsibility to hand the town a list. It's the town's responsibility.
Oh, yeah.
Did you get one?
No.
Okay. Keep on raising your hand when everybody says something about it like, is he trying to say he got one?
I have an explanation of why we didn't get it.
Okay. Name?
Pat Murphy, seventy-one Norton Road. And I think what the problem was why people didn't attend the meeting, uh, last night.
Different, different.
And, and why, uh, people didn't get notices is that there are very few people within three hundred feet of the development. It's the beginning of Norton Road, two houses. Maybe one more, I'm not sure about the one on Draper Avenue, a few houses on Draper Avenue. They probably got letters, certified letters. But you have all the rest of Norton Road, all of Furway, all of Hemlock. No one in the neighborhood, other than those that are close to the, where the building is proposed to be built, received the letter.
Because there's no legal requirement for them to get it.
I understand that. But.
The laws are the laws.
Don't complain that we're not coming to a meeting when we don't find out about the meeting until you talk to someone who received the notice.
Well, a- again, I will say, I, I don't, and this is just my own perception after presiding over hundreds of meetings. I don't believe that it was their intent to criticize. I think it was their intent. And I would bet you they're sitting there saying, I didn't realize that the only people that got a letter from them were the same people that were on that abutters list, which as you so nicely put, is a very small circle right around where the building would be. And to my mind, that gives us another reason for saying, I'm glad I asked them to come because it gave more of you a chance to hear what was going on and to put your thinking caps on before Tuesday.
Well, I have a suggestion, uh, for, uh, the developer is that they get a list of all the people who live on Norton Road, all the people who live on Furway, all the people who live on Hemlock Way. In that, when there are meetings or when there's gonna be, uh, people need to know to go to someplace, that they send it to everyone. Not just the people who are within three hundred feet. Uh, which I know is the law, that's what's required. But that doesn't give people proper notice.
Wait, so we don't send the notice out?
Right.
Town sends the notice out. We file the list of abutters certified by the assessors office.
You could ask that, if you want to do that, you're certainly welcome to ask that of the zoning board. But it's, it, it can't be required.
I know it can't be required.
No, but it can't be required of the applicant because they don't send out the original notices. But I will tell you something, again, after all these years. Very often, when there's a large number of people in a neighborhood that are interested in a project, they pick a couple of contact people for the group. And they are the ones who stay in contact because as Mr. Jacoby indicated, this could go on for quite a while. It could be, come back to the zoning board and be continued. It could be continued to a date to be determined when everything is done. So you could choose to do, to go that way. Am I telling you to do that? Absolutely not. I'm just saying that people have done it in the past and worked with their neighbors to do that. Uh, whatever you need to do to help yourselves out. Okay?
Thank you.
Yep. I hope you didn't mind my mentioning that I've seen you at one or two meetings over the years.
And my name is Murphy.
Oh, did I say Norton? Ken Murphy, Norton Road. I'm not doing good tonight, am I? I'm sorry. I really am sorry.
And you are the planning board, not the zoning board.
Yeah, I know. Been too busy the past few days. When you got grandchildren, you're trying to keep away from Christmas presents, things get interesting. Anyhow, anybody else have any questions or comments they'd like to make? Yes, sir.
Vinnie Sharma, one Hemlock Way. Uh, I just wanted to back up everybody's comments. I agree with them. And, um, if you get a chance, take a drive. I'm, I'm sure you're familiar with it. But, um, when you're coming down Norton Road, you know, this is, this building is directly in the line of sight. So, the traffic is gonna be a major concern.
Thank you. Anybody else? Comments, questions? Yes, ma'am.
Lisa Christopher, one fifty-nine Draper Avenue. My comment is, why are they starting to take down the building? Part of the roof has, has been taken off. It, it's making the area an eyesore. Some of the windows are kicked in. We knew that it was a, a, a derelict building, but do we have to look at it like this now? Until when? When is the next time you guys are gonna do something? Or somebody should board up that building? What's going on?
We're working on the application for the demolition permit right now. We hope to get it down in the very near future as soon as we can.
So there's no permit?
Excuse me?
Right now, there's no permit, but the, um, roof has been taken off.
No, that's been all vandalism.
That's vandalism?
Okay, hold on.
I don't, okay. No. If you know me at all, you know I will not allow any back and forth. If you want to inquire about that afterwards, feel free. But no one who appears before this board is ever allowed to speak in an unpleasant manner, period.
Yeah, uh...
Yes, sir.
David, uh, yeah, we've had some problems with just kids breaking into it over the summer. Uh, we've alerted the North Attleboro Police Department, so they're driving by more. Uh, we bore, we keep, continue to board up the house and they continue in. We're hoping the cold weather and the police presence will probably, uh, solve that issue coming up, so.
Did you have to do any abatement?
I, I, I'm just more the contact first.
Well, to their point, though, the entire roof has been stripped, correct?
Yes.
All of the windows have been removed?
No, the, the entire, uh, roof has not been stripped. Some of the windows have been, uh, we have removed them. All, they've all been thrown out by kids. They can go through second floor. It's a very old house and it's been a problem all summer for us, so.
I'm gonna drive by tomorrow because I could swear that that entire roof is stripped.
The outside at the very least, you can see clearly.
Yeah, the north side is definitely. So if some kids climbed up there and stripped the north side?
Uh, are you seeing the windows?
Roof?
Yeah.
Either way. What we're gonna say is, we have not done that. Have, we, we got that report, what, on Monday about the roof, I believe?
Yeah.
I mean, if, if the neighbors don't believe me, there's nothing I can do.
Yeah, I know, I get that.
Well, I'm not a developer who's gonna try to cheat the system to, you know, illegally take down a roof or something. It's just a ridiculous.
Yeah, it's, it's blows my mind.
Right, it's just, it's craziness. But anyway, I just wanna make sure you're new. We, we are not doing demo. We have just been trying to keep the vandals out. As David said, we notified the police. There was some vandalism when we were there for the, the entire site walk. We had all the department heads and the state was there. That's the process before we got our site eligibility letter. That was the first time, I think, we noticed on the second floor someone had kicked in the glass door on the second floor. No one had seen that, so I think kids were getting inside the building. We had it, we padlocked the door, so we didn't think anybody was even getting in it originally. So, that's...
You're working on a demo permit?
Yes.
You're gonna get it?
And the police have been completely notified now to the point where they're trying to step up their, their patrols to.
Does it need to go to historical for a demo permit?
Uh, I think it does, yeah. Yeah, I don't, I, I'm just telling you, Greg, we don't, I don't do the, it's...
I was gonna say.
People in the office are working on that for me, so I don't have the answer.
I was gonna say, get it down as fast as you can.
Yeah, yeah.
And clean it up.
The, the basic line about that is that this board has no control over demolition permits. All of that is handled through the building commissioners department. If you have any questions about that, I would suggest that you contact either the police department or the building department or both. It has nothing to do with the planning board, so I'm not gonna tell you to do anything. Yes, sir?
Okay, I'm not saying that this company and these gentlemen were involved. But there was a, a whole team of people working on that building for a whole day. And I watched them scraping the shingles off the roof.
Well, you, you can.
I don't want to say that it isn't stripped because it is. I live right next to it.
Okay, it's, you can sort all that stuff out amongst yourselves, okay? Anybody else got a question? Yes, sir?
I have a lot of, for certain, I come up and I just had a, I think a lot of it is, is there any other access for, like, do you have to use Draper? Is there any other way around that? Can you guys look into that at all? Just because, I mean, that, that's gonna, it would solve a lot of problems. You're ahead again. And most of your complaints, I think, you know what I mean, like, I'd rather a forty Unico up than a hundred and fifty Unico. Like this gentleman said here, I don't know his name, but you know, you, you basically gotta pick your battles. And I get it, you don't want it to look like New York City, but there is gonna be some type of development. So I think if you came up with another access way into this complex, I think that would help you out. And that's just my thought about, again, I live on Kamala. Draper's a nightmare to begin with. So I didn't know if there was another way that you could, you know, have access to your complex without affecting Draper.
Well, there's a lot of ways to move out of them.
Well, I mean, with today's technology.
Be that as it may, we're all...
You can do a lot of different things. I think Draper, I think, again, that access point right near Kamala, I think that would solve a lot of the, you know...
I think zoning board is gonna have it peer reviewed with their traffic.
Right.
And they'll probably look at every chance they can.
Well, that was just my, you know, everybody, that's, I know, the traffic thing is mainly to me, and certainly, and the safety on Draper. So if you move the access point, maybe that would make a lot of people happy and help you out and save. And, you know.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Okay, so before I mess up any more words, thank you and good night.
Thank you very much. We appreciate your time.
Yep. There are no public hearings.
We asked them what the hell they were doing. They said they were moving asbestos.
Does he have to come back?
He doesn't have to. He's here.
But the record is that Mr. Lawrence returns to the table at seven fifty-eight.
Okay, the roof don't...
Yeah, they stripped the roof.
Yeah, just a heads up, we're still in an active meeting, so please, if you're gonna talk outside.
In the nice weather.
Okay, moving on.
Moving right along. Uh, Chair's Corner. Gil asked, has told me that we had gotten a communication from the Medicomic Greenway Group. That's the group that wants to put a, uh, Greenway, uh, walking biking path from Walpole to the town state line, right? And they, uh, asked us if we would send a letter in support of their grant application for the Rantham Walpole and Norfolk section of the...
Not Plaineville, yep.
Yep. No, Plainville's not ready yet. They're working on it.
Yes.
Yeah.
Send them a letter.
Fine. Just a generic letter, the planning board?
So he has a template, and it is what he...
Let's read his template.
It's kinda lengthy, I guess I would say.
No, I already don't like his template.
Where is it, Gil?
Oh, it's way too much.
Five A. Yeah, it seems to be very lengthy.
No, we're talking, I'm talking, if I were writing this, it would be a one paragraph, three-sentence comment. The board discussed this at their meeting on December seventh, two thousand twenty-three, and we support the Greenway in Walpole, Nor, where am I? Norfolk. Rentham, uh, Wal, phew, still can't talk. Walpole and Norfolk.
And I would probably tie into, we look forward to supporting this again when it comes to North Attleboro.
Say that one more time a little bit.
Oh, yeah, I want to be snarky about it.
And we look forward to receiving reciprocal support when it comes to Plainville and North Attleboro.
Exactly. I want to be snarky about it.
Goodie for you. Other than that, I don't have anything right now. I have a couple irons in the fire, but not yet. Gil?
Um, not, uh, not really too much. Greenleaf, I sent out an email to the planning board. I went out there. I mean, the work in general looks pretty good, except for the, I guess, the contractor left poured asphalt and concrete in a back property that could perhaps cause future damage. So...
Yeah, is he gonna loom that?
Uh, yeah, he said he's gonna loom it next spring, but in the meantime, I will follow up. By now, he said, uh, he's gonna hire a contractor that's gonna take all that concrete out. And so let me check on that.
The whole wheelbarrow load?
What's that?
The whole wheelbarrow load?
More than that. I was actually quite surprised that someone left that much...
Are we holding a bond there still?
Yeah, uh, so I looked at that, as some way, somehow, there's no bond for that project. I'm not sure why. I think it was just, I don't know, maybe a lapse in is something...
That was like a, yeah, transition area.
Yeah.
I would get some sort of letter of commitment, because that project's been another one of these dragging, kicking, and screaming to do the right thing.
When do they plan on opening?
I still can't hear you, I'm sorry.
When do they plan on opening?
Oh, who knows? I, I mean, uh, you know...
What's their process at this point?
So, 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 the, well, that's a good question. So his next step is he needs to go to the Board of Health, and he wasn't going until we were satisfied with the site plan construction. And I think he's at the point to do that, and he has interior work finished, and I think he's almost wrapping up with the building commissioner. So, but opening is a different question. He could have all of his permits and, and building permits ready, and I don't know when he will actually open, probably not at times.
I would probably just ask him for a letter of commitment that he's gonna loom and seat it.
Sure, yeah, I will do that.
Actual letterhead.
Yep. And also, like, I'm linking that to the CO, just so you know. I'm aware of that. I don't want him to walk away, and in order for him to open and get a CO, I will make sure it's loomed and seated, and the asphalt is taken out.
Yeah, because he's a while before you even need to see it.
Yeah, he's still a ways away. He's gotta go to Board of Health, then he's gotta take all the local permits, give them to the state, they gotta come do their inspection, sign off, and then, no, he's, yeah, he's a little ways away.
Rockland Trust, they're almost done. The one that's by Quants, they will be submitting asphalt in the future, and just so the board is aware, they will be asking for a temporary CO just for the bank itself in the coming month.
As opposed to what? Isn't it just the bank?
Just for the bank, and the idea is to just allow them to soft opening, allow them to train employees, get the computer systems up and running, and, and...